The L.A. USD Board of Education Compensation Review Committee. All members are present and we have a quorum. And before we get started, I'd like to introduce two L.A. USD students. Alexis Cornejo, who just graduated from Kinder at Porter Ranch Community School, rising up to first, and Esteban Cornejo, who just finished second grade, rising up to third, and they are both reading books from our L.A. Public Library, Captain Underpants this week. So I'm a proud L.A. USD graduate, and my kids are L.A. USD students as well, so thank you for that, committee members. There is no public comment cards, and so we will go ahead and proceed on to the agenda.
Madam Chair, we can begin with approval of the minutes.
I make a motion to accept the minutes.
A sec.
Approved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes? Approved.
Item number one is a discussion and presentation by current and former Los Angeles Unified School District Board of Education members, and I believe we have Ms. Yoli Flores here today with us.
Thank you for joining us tonight.
You're welcome. Pleased to be here. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have written remarks, and I'll submit these as well. I thought long and hard about what I wanted to say, so I might actually focus on reading it, because I wanted it to be very, very thoughtful and specific and helpful to all of you. But first, let me just thank you for your service. This is not always very fun work. It's a lot of deliberation, but I really appreciate that you sit here, that you listen to the folks coming before you, and that you take this matter seriously. It speaks highly of the leadership that we continue to need and to see in L.A., so thank you so much. So I want to start by giving you a little bit of my background, and then I'll speak a little bit about some of my experience as a school board member for L.A. Unified. So first, let me just share a bit about my position on the board. I was elected to the L.A. Board of Education in 2007, and for my first term over those four years, I served as vice president of the board for three of those years. I also chaired the facilities committee. At the time, you know, we were building schools and had a lot of deliberation and work to do on that. I also chaired two subcommittees that were advisory in nature. There were two issues that were very important to me and that I chaired the first year and then again the fourth year, and those two were on parent engagement. And the second during my early years was around building smaller schools and more schools that were more personalized as we were building new schools. Also during my tenure, I represented L.A. Unified on the county's education coordinating committee, which was a committee that focused on the education for kids and the child welfare system and the child and the foster care system and the juvenile justice or probation system. I also served at the time representing L.A. Unified on the city's commission for children, youth, and their families. Doesn't exist anymore, but it did then. And then I was the member that was appointed to serve on the board and on the executive committee of the Council of Great City Schools. The Council of Great City Schools is an umbrella national policy organization that represents, I think now it's the 60 largest urban school districts in the nation. So I served on that federal, that national committee as well. And I dedicated at least, if not more, 30 or 40 percent of my time to visiting schools, to meeting with parents, to engaging community members and leaders. And I easily dedicated over 40 hours per week to my school board duties. I also represented L.A. USD in external organizations and committees. You've heard of some of those. And then, of course, through the lengthy board meetings, closed sessions, committee meetings, one-on-one meetings with the superintendent, board retreats, and the list goes on. Much of this that you have already likely heard from other board members who have given you the time commitment, the kinds of tasks, the roles and responsibilities. So it's no secret that L.A. USD Board of Education is a demanding job, given its sheer size and its complexity. And you've also, I'm sure, heard about the clear reservations about the two-tier system, which at best, in my opinion, requires enormous personal sacrifice, and at worst, it privileges people of wealth and resources. To be sure, though, whatever system we might have ended up with, choosing the first or the second, depending on our need to work for additional resources, the time commitment to our constituents nor to the work did not diminish. We all, I can assure you, put in at least 40 hours of time to our duties. Where I would like to place the greatest emphasis, as you deliberate, a fair compensation to the school board member, is on this question. What message -- oh, sorry about that. What message do we send to the importance of serving on school boards, the place where the sole focus is on the future of children? If we truly believe that children are our future, that education is the gateway out of poverty, that being able to read and write and think and develop our creative and artistic potential, if we believe these are the bedrock of a democracy, then why would we diminish the role of a school board member to deny them a fair compensation to those whose job it is to make that a reality? So how is this different than serving on a city council, or the California State Legislature, or many of our states elected and appointed positions where compensation is commensurate to the duties of the job? The only difference is that it's not about amount of time you put in. The only difference is that this job, the job of a school board member, is about nurturing and guiding and preparing children to realize their potential, to realize their dreams, and to ensure a sound and just and fair, so that they can ensure a sound and just and fair democracy. The only difference is that this is the only job of that position. So if you think about every other elected position, the scope is wide, but not at the school board. The school board's job is only and solely to ensure the future of children. So L.A. USD is now the largest school district in the nation with an elected school board. I believe we have an opportunity to model and declare that the role of a school board member is worthy of a decent salary because we value children, because we believe there is no other elected position that has the direct potential to define the future of this country, and this is worth investing in. So thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Ms. Flores, thank you very much. I appreciate you joining us and for your time and your leadership, and you've dedicated your whole career to advancing children and making sure that we have a quality education system, so we appreciate you being here today.
Thank you.
And we would love to ask you questions if you are open.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Flores. What do you think of the half-time position?
So that's the -- I call it a two-tier compensation position. Again, I think at best, it's a huge sacrifice for the individual that decides to take the higher compensation and forego any additional income. At worst, as I said, it privileges wealthier people and people with resources that may not need that. My situation was different. I needed to have the income that I had before because I support my family, because I -- in fact, the reason I didn't run again a second term was because I had made a commitment to get my nephew, my godson, through college. I needed that income to get him to college, and I couldn't get as a school board member, even at that two-tier system, or the higher level for the two-tier system. And why was that? Because even though I could find another job, one, it was not sustainable. It was not personally sustainable, not for my health, not for my family, to put in 40 hours, just on my school board, another 40 hours in my job that I had. So after my third year, I had to make that very difficult personal decision that I couldn't continue. It was not, again, not sustainable, not feasible for me. So I understand, I don't like, but I understand the reason at the time for coming up with this two-tier system. I think, again, I think it's unfair, and I think it continues to diminish the value of the people whose job it is, sole job it is, to ensure the future of children.
So you think the two-tier system should be done away with and the position should be full-time?
Absolutely. Absolutely. It is a full-time position.
And in your opinion, what should the compensation be?
Well, if I look, and I did look, at the compensation for other elected officials, for other appointed positions, you know, I would, at minimum, and I'm not remembering what the average was, but at minimum, that position, in my view, given the work, given the responsibilities, given the leadership, is at least $100,000 position.
Thank you.
Any other questions from another member?
And I would add to that. If you notice how much the chiefs of staff are earning.
Yes.
So even that, there were chiefs of staff that are earning over 100. You know, it was just mind-boggling. How could you, the person who is responsible for this work, for this seat, for the decisions that you make, be earning less than your chief of staff? Not something that made a lot of sense.
Ms. Flores, if you were to understand that we had no -- the floor, the part-time compensation could not be eliminated, how would you change that compensation package?
If it were not --
If it could not be eliminated, that system?
I guess first I would ask, you know, whether, you know, all rules are set in stone forever. I don't think they are. I think, you know, we ought to think about what it will require to change that, first and foremost, and I think it requires us having an honest conversation with the public. And, you know, if it requires a ballot measure, then we pursue that. I think it's a matter of how we value this position, and that's, again, the thing that I'm going to keep coming back to, is how do we value the role of the leader who is first and foremost responsible for children? And to not strive to change that, I think, would be unfortunate.
Thank you. I appreciate that response.
And we'll have the city attorney weigh in on that. We have heard on that particular issue, and so we'll have him weigh in at a later point. Any other questions for Ms. Flores?
Very thorough.
Well, we appreciate your time and your insight and your very thoughtfully crafted remarks. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And I'll submit these for the record.
Oh, thank you.
Perfect.
We have another school board member here. Do you want to call her? Oh, thank you. Thank you for joining us today.
Oh, my pleasure.
We appreciate your returning. If you can introduce yourself and --
Sure. My name is Monica Ratliff, and I was a school board member for BD 6, which is in the Valley, ranging from Panorama City through Pacoima, Silmar, Lakeview Terrace, Reseda. It's a huge district with over 130 schools and over 100,000 constituents, hundreds of thousands of constituents, actually, but when you look at people who actually vote. But anyway, the point is, it's a huge area, and it's actually bigger than the city council district. So, for example, it encompasses, actually, CD 7, as well as CD 6, as well as part of Coquian and Blumenfield districts as well. So it's actually larger than the city council districts, which I think is actually a really important thing to note, because if you actually look at the city council members' salaries, right, I believe that's over like $180,000, and they actually have larger staffs as well. So my staff was actually only four people, and we were serving more constituents than the city council. So I think there's a real issue of inequity in terms of financing, in terms of like, how are you going to serve the people? And so I was listening a little bit to former board member Flores's comments, and I would absolutely agree that something needs to be done about the compensation. I'm actually, I ended up working part-time my last two years, so I'm not necessarily arguing that you should get rid of part-time compensation, only because I think you want to keep open the possibility that there is someone out there who would love to remain a firefighter, let's say, or whatever, and still serve on the school board. So I'm not asking for you to get rid of part-time compensation, but I do think that the full-time compensation has to seriously change, because my salary dropped, I think I had mentioned this before, when I got on the school board, and so I was making on the school board about $45,000. And every once in a while, because it was so frustrating to me, I would figure out, well, how much am I making an hour, right? And so the problem with being a school board member is it's actually not a 40-hour-a-week job. So, and it's also not, unlike being a teacher where, yes, and I'm a teacher now, and like you, teachers work hard, but they do get a break every once in a while, right? Like, every once in a while, you get to go on like winter break or summer break, and like, yes, you could check your email, but you're not required to. Being a school board member, you're expected to be checking your email and be on call all the time. It is like a non-stop, 24/7 job, and it's every day of every week of every year. And, I mean, I'm sure a lot of that's the life of an elected, but I just think that when you have such a huge area, you're actually going to find that things are coming up. So with 130 schools, over 130 schools, and so many people in your district, I think you're going to end up have -- you get emails all the time, in the middle of the night, and people expect you to respond, right? And the excuse, "I'm sorry, but I'm a part-time school board member," nobody wants to hear that, right? Nobody appreciates that. When I went part-time, I ended up having to delegate a lot of meetings to my staff, because obviously I can't meet with people. I'm in school. And I thought, well, people will understand I'm in school teaching. I'm a school board member who's a teacher. But I'm telling you, people still didn't like that. They were still like, what do you mean, I have to meet with staff? I want to meet with the board member. So I just think it is important, I think, to make the full-time salary such that a person could do it full-time, because I think that the public actually expects their elected school board members to be full-time. And a number of school board members have actually run on, "I'm going to be a full-time school board member." So Scott Smurlson, who ran against Tamar, Galletson ran on the, "I'm going to be a full-time school board member," and the public, of course, loves that. But it is a little easier for Scott, because he was already retired. And so I think one of the problems with the current system is you're really attracting people who are either independently wealthy, or they're retired, or they think they can do it full-time. I certainly did, right? So I'd started in legal services, and my first year in legal services, I made about $45,000. So I was like, when the Times asked me, "How are you going to do this full-time?", I said, "Oh, I made $45,000 when I first started in legal services. I'll be able to do it." Now, that wasn't like the '90s. I should have thought about that, right? I should have thought about like, when was I making $45,000 a year? Because going back to making $45,000 a year was like really hard. It was very difficult. So that's kind of been my experience in terms of the compensation. I wanted to mention, because I thought, you know, this is such an important thing that you're doing here, and I do hope that you will make a change, because oftentimes, when I was working full-time, sometimes for $18 an hour or less, because it's such a huge job, I remember thinking, who were these commissioners before? Like, what made them think $45,000 was like a reasonable amount of money? So I do hope, so my resentment, if anything, was always towards this anonymous commission from before, right? Because it is really hard when you're making less than your staff and you're working longer hours than your staff. And the resentment was never towards your staff. They're amazing, and they're working like dogs, too. It's towards these anonymous people years ago, who somehow thought $45,000 was enough. But I'd love to answer any questions that you might have, or --
Thank you. We appreciate your comments and appreciate that you returned to answer some more questions at this particular meeting. Mr. Henderson?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. My question I have for you, former board member Ratliff, is in regards to the effectiveness of the office. As you stated, because you were working and constituents had to meet with staff more frequently, and your staff didn't get to see you as much as they could, could you speak to the effectiveness? I mean, you did very well as a school board member, because you really worked it hard, but could you speak to the effectiveness of the board member not being so readily accessible for staff, for constituents? Could you speak to that?
Sure. I mean, it's way easier now that I'm done to be able to come and tell you frankly that I don't think I did as good a job, in a way, the second half than I did the first half, right? Because the first half, I think where the effectiveness really diminishes, is actually in your ability to visit school sites, because you can't. You can't visit school sites if you're working during the school. I mean, you can after school, but like, what good is that, right? I mean, you don't get to visit the classrooms, you don't get to like meet the teachers or the staff. So we actually did set up a system, because I missed visiting school sites so much, where when we had meetings with the local district superintendent and their staff, we would meet at school sites. So I could still see a school site, and it would still bring some joy to me. But it was hard, because you're not going into the classrooms. And I think one of the amazing things about a school board member is that they can go in any school in their district at any time, right? I mean, who's going to stop you, right? So you can like go into a school, and you can like meet the staff, and you can see problems. See, the beauty of going into the schools is actually seeing problems. And when I say problems, what I mean is like, if I see that the asphalt has cracked, right, I can take a picture of it, and I can send it to facilities, and I can say, "Hey, facilities, fix this." And they will, because what are they going to say? No to a school board member? No. But they will say no to your staff, right? So sometimes when my staff would like say, "Oh, we saw this at the school. We'd like it fixed," they wouldn't say no, but they would drag their feet, right? They'd be like, "Well, we'll have somebody go look at it," and then they might have somebody go look at it, and they're like, "Oh, well, it's going to cost a lot of money, and it's going to take a lot of time." But to a school board member who's got a picture of it, they don't do that. And so in the end, I would just step in, right? I'd be like, "My staff says this. Fix it." But it does impact your efficiency.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right. Well, that was like easy. You're an easy group. So I did hear you ask, though, the last school board member, what they thought the compensation should be.
I'm trying to check my notes if we asked you that last time.
So you did not. So I've got a long list of potential compensations, right? And the reason I said that I did this is because I think that, well, I definitely think you really should make as much as your chief of staff, really, because like, that's just weird, I think, right? So your chief of staff can make up to $119,000, $119,259, right? So we'll just round down, $119,000. And so I think $119,000 is a very appropriate and fair amount. I also think that if you wanted to look at principals, because many times what you're doing is, you're doing a lot of administrative work as a school board member, right? You're solving a lot of problems, especially when it relates to staff, when it relates to facilities, when it relates to operations, right? And principals make up to $131,000, so they make $131,756, and then the average is $111, $363. So I would say anywhere between $119,000 and $131,000 would seem like it would make a lot of sense, and it would also allow you to attract principals, right? Well, there's still actually principals. Right now, you only get retired principals who run for school board, right? A principal, and I remember talking to this great principal who works at Haddon Elementary School. He's an amazing principal, and he used to be a city council person for the city of San Fernando. I think he was even mayor briefly, right? His name is Richard Ramos. And I said, "You'd be such a great school board member." And he's like, "I can't possibly take that kind of cut. I have a family. I can't do that." Right? So I think the ability to attract principals and teachers who are currently in the classroom and in the school site would make a big difference in terms of knowing what's going on and being able to make a change. And so there, I would say, that would be the benefit of having $131,756 be the max out, because that would be the most that a principal would be making.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions now? Well, thank you very much for joining us. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So item number three. Actually, I do have a, I'm sorry, we haven't done item number two. I do have a question for the city attorney. A question came up about whether eliminating the part-time position is a possibility, and so I wanted to make sure that we address this for the benefit of the full committee and to require to make it a full-time position.
Sure. Harith Trevetti from the city attorney's office. This committee's authority is derived from the state constitution and the city charter, and the authority is somewhat limited in that you have the authority to set the compensation for board members, but that doesn't include the authority to set general duties and responsibilities. So what the committee can do pursuant to the constitution and charter is to set compensation higher than the state minimum and tie that, and have the option to tie that to a full-time service, which is what the current scheme is. And of course, as been discussed in the committee, you could increase that number from the current $48,000 figure and tie it to a full-time service.
Tie it to what?
To full-time service, which is how it's being done right now. What you couldn't do is require full-time service to obtain any salary at all. So the state default, the state code minimum of $24,000 should remain as a default option for somebody, because if you impose a full-time requirement to receive any salary, that's tantamount to imposing a new duty or responsibility, and that's something that only state code can really change. So the --
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that last sentence?
Sure. Imposing a general duty or responsibility to receive any salary at all is outside the parameters of this committee. It's something that can be changed in state law. State law doesn't have a provision that requires full-time service. It could. But in absence of that, the default in state code exists, and it's $24,000 plus the cost of living adjustments that have been approved. So that's to be maintained as an option. But a higher level can be set, and that could be set and tied to an increase, tied to a full-time service at the discretion of this committee.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Ms. Flores. I'm so sorry. Forgive me. I didn't see your hand at the end.
No, no. No, I just want to be clear, because to make that distinction between you're not saying these are your duties and responsibilities, but we can say, if you make this amount, you need to work full-time, just as it says right now.
Right. That's within your authority.
Just changing the amount.
That's within your authority to do, right.
Okay. Okay. Got it.
Yes, Mr. Flores.
Madam Chair. So let's just say the, this committee says, determines that it's $100,000 for full-time. They can also make the recommendation of, say, 50% of that, in this case, $50,000, would be for part-time.
That's within your discretion. The only thing that I'm saying is that you couldn't eliminate the state code requirement of $24,000 as the bare minimum.
Or keep it at the current $24,000, correct?
You could keep it at the current $24,000.
For the part-time.
Yes.
What provision is that of the state code?
35120 of the state education code.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Ms. Spears.
If this commission were to decide to increase the salary, would it be effective immediately?
So the resolution adopted by this commission is effective 60 days after the adoption of the resolution. So whatever salary structure you set would go into place So whatever salary structure you set would go into place sixty days after you vote to adopt it.
Okay. And so the follow-up to that is, given that, given that we have a part-time situation, if we wanted to, we have board members that are part-time that are doing full-time work. So if they're part-time, then how do, how do we do that? Do they remain in a part-time position until the end of their term? How, I'm a little confused.
I'm not sure if I'm understanding the question right, but what I think you're asking is if you impose, or if you increase the salary for those who are accepting full-time commitment to a hundred thousand dollars, which is the term, then in sixty days after your action, those board members who are working full-time and don't have outside earned income would have that salary go into place. It's been proposed to also possibly increase the threshold for those who have outside employment, and that also would go into place sixty days after you act.
So, sorry, just following up, then, I'm like, on that same question. So I'm guessing that it would be an individual's call? Because if I am currently working part-time, you know, at that lower salary, I would have sixty days to give notice to my current employer that, you know, I'm terminating my employment.
I believe that's right, and I believe that's how it happens now. I believe the current school board members, if they don't have outside employment, then they are eligible for the higher level if they commit full-time. And if they do have outside employment, then they have the lower level. I believe that's how the district handles it now.
So it's not tied to their term, then?
It hasn't been administered that way by the district, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, a person that is working part-time now, if this commission raises the salary, they can give notice and say, now I want to go full-time?
I believe that's how the district has administered it, and I think that's within the authority of the district to administer that way.
And that would depend on whether there's a need or whether it's automatic?
It's the board member's choice, I think. If they're going to, if they're going to serve full-time or part-time. And the determining factor is if they have outside employment. If they eliminate that element, then they can just become full-time. That's my understanding.
That's how I believe it's administered even now, yes. So if, for example, somebody has an outside job and then quits that job three months from now, even if you change nothing in the resolution, they would still then, and commit full-time to working for the, as a board member, they would be eligible for the higher salary.
It sounds like more like an administrative type of thing, as opposed to something that's related to code or--
Correct.
Can I add something, just for my own clarification? So, because to me, it sounds like it's less about part-time, full-time, it's more about compensation. It's already been, I think, established that each board member spends a large amount of their time doing the work, no matter what the compensation is and how they get compensated. If they already have outside employment, then the most they can receive is the lower tier. If they elect to, I'm going to really do this full-time, although I've already been doing it full-time as my sole source of income, then I would get the higher rate. So I think our committee should just kind of keep in mind that the time is being spent, no matter what. It's just, what are you going to do as far as your source of income? Will you receive the twenty-four plus whatever else you're doing? Or will you just do this as your sole source of income? And then we just focus on the compensation if we elect to change that compensation.
I understand that. I understand that part. I guess, I'm just trying to figure out in my mind, okay, so I'm a board member and I'm working part-time because I have outside employment. And so this commission decides that it wants to increase the compensation, increase the salary. So I go, hmm, now I don't have to do, I got a full-time job as a board member, but I still have this part-time job over here. I can, if the commission is, if the compensation is increased, I can say to the board, I'm not, no longer going to do this, I'm going to go full-time. And so they automatically, they can automatically get the increase? That's what I'm trying to get, understand?
That's how it's being administered right now, yes.
All right, cool.
Thank you. Any other questions for the city attorney now? Thank you. Let's move on to item number two, please.
Item number two is discussion presentation by John Walsh, deputy chief financial officer for LAUSD. And we invite Mr. Walsh to come to the table.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Walsh, thank you for joining us.
It's my pleasure to be before you. Before, I don't have a large presentation. I anticipated I was going to be answering any questions you've had. With respect to the specific question that was raised on a board member determination to take half versus full, it is an administrative process. The board, board member makes a determination, informs the executive officer of the board. I know this because I'm in charge of payroll, and so we just make that adjustment when that determination's been made. So, we, I understand you want to know a little bit about the budget and--
A lot about the budget.
A lot about, okay. So we have adopted our budget a few weeks ago. It's a seven-point-four billion dollar general fund budget. That is larger than the City of Los Angeles. We have an estimated sixty thousand of full-time employees. We're the second-largest employer in the county. I think the county's number one. Our budget is a three-year document. The state law requires that we project not just the next fiscal year, but two years outward. That budget document goes to the LA County Office of Education, along with the LCAP, that's the Local Control Accountability Plan, which is new in the last four or five years. Those documents are reviewed by what we call LACO, and we get a determination whether our budget is accepted or denied, or request for further information in the September-October timeframe. From there, it goes to the state. So that's sort of the administrative or governance process with respect to our budget. With respect to where we stand financially, we remain in a structural deficit. Meaning, our expenditures in each year typically are higher than the revenues we're getting. We are looking at forecasting a deficit in nineteen-twenty of about seventy-six million dollars. That's a fairly significant amount for us. Basically, what we are doing to cover our deficit, structural deficit, over the next three years is spending down balances.
Say that again?
Spending down ending balances. And so in our budget document, we show how our ending balances slowly are declining as a result of the structural deficit. We have proposed several budget solutions as a part of this budget process. We went through a central office and local district cut, which was slightly less than eighty million dollars over the next, eighty million dollars a year. We're also, with respect to the nineteen-twenty deficit of seventy-six million dollars, we're proposing to find either new efficiencies or increase of class size of four, for grades four through twelve.
You said increase class size?
Increase of class size of four from grades four to twelve.
Wow.
So we, there are some significant issues with respect to our budget. We are still projecting an enrollment decline of slightly less than three percent a year. We have significant OPEB liability, responsibility for health insurance of retirees. It's one of the largest in the, for local governments in the country. Those are the issues that we need to grapple with.
Any questions for Mr. Walsh?
I have--
We'll start with Ms. Spears and then--
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, for that report. Now, in regards to the structural deficit, is that encompassing all other funds and unrestricted funds in total? Or are you just discussing the structural deficit in the unrestricted funds?
It's largely in the general fund budget. For us, general fund means the monies from the state, LCFF, but it also means federal grants. So Titles One, Titles Two. Title One is the federal grant for low-income children that we give to the schools. Basically, what we're saying is that our operating deficit is such, is a challenge, and that we either have to reduce personnel or find other efficiencies to get to a point where our revenue equals our expenditures. The lion's share of our money is tied to the number of children we have and their attendance at our schools. So obviously, when you're losing up to almost three percent of your enrollment each year, that is a significant decline over the last seven, eight years.
Another question. So the district revenue is only coming from ADA and federal grants, and where else does revenue come from? I'm just curious.
There are other kinds of grants, state grants. There is funding specifically for special ed students, both at the state and federal level. Part of our money comes from local property taxes, that's offset in Prop. 98. In other words, the state reduces the amount it would give us by the amount of property taxes we receive from, at a local level. But basically, we're talking about LCFF revenue, we're talking about federal and state grants, and we're talking about property tax.
Thank you.
Ms. Spears?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. President?
Chair.
Chair. Madam Chair. I think I heard in previous testimony that the employees of the school district received a ten percent raise around 2013?
Uh, I don't know if it was 2013. It is a, it was a phased-in ten percent raise, that's accurate. I don't remember which year it started. I want to say it was one year later, but don't hold me to that.
Did you have a structural deficit at that time?
Yes.
So if, if this commission were to increase the board's compensation, would that be a whammy to the budget?
It would not be a significant whammy to the budget. We're talking about seven individual salaries. I think currently, base comp for our board members is something like three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars a year. So depending on how much more you would, it would not be a very significant financial issue. I know there are obviously optics and political issues that you're trying to sort out as well.
And as the keeper of the funds for the school district, do you believe that the compensation for the board members should be increased?
I don't, I don't have a position on that. I can reflect that, and I know both of the former board members who spoke with you, before you, they do work very hard. And I can't tell you what the dollar amount should be for that compensation. But it's a significant job, and it, the low level of the pay, and as well, you're not accruing in your state pension plan as well. I don't know if that was discussed before. That is, can be a very significant barrier for people to choose the job, or to run for the job.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Goff?
I do. I don't know if I was reading this correctly, on the document that we were provided, you know, that is the budget, says fingertip facts on page nine. What's the difference between, on the right-hand side, it says books and supplies, five-hundred-and-seventy-one million, down from fifteen, sixteen budget? And then when you go further down, it says capital outlay, but it also speaks to books and media for libraries. Is that library materials only? And the other one is classroom? Why is it broken down that way?
Yeah, I apologize, this isn't a document that my office creates. However, I believe capital outlay, and it's a fairly small number, I believe that's largely related to equipment and maybe library equipment. Books and supplies is the sort of, the large object code that describes the, what we call IMA, so textbooks, instructional material.
Okay, only because it went up in the sixteen-seventeen budget while the books and supplies line item went down.
Yeah, that's accurate. I don't have an explanation for that specifically. Generally speaking, with respect to textbooks, there can be ranges in expenditures from year to year because of the cycle of textbook adoption. When we adopt, say, math textbooks, for instance, that can be a fairly significant cost, but it may be in one particular fiscal year, not another. So there may be a variation as a result of that.
Okay, that explains. And then, what, why are you anticipating lower enrollment? Why are you anticipating lower enrollment?
There are two basic reasons. One is that live births are, and our projection of live births suggests decline in birth rates. And we're projecting that for the next three years. We don't really do more than three or four years. It's a little iffy after that, but the trend has been that live birth is down. And the second, and it's roughly fifty percent, the second reason is enrollment in independent charter schools.
Any other questions for Mr. Walsh? I have a question, I'm not sure if you can answer this, or Mr. Crane, but of the current board members, how many are part-time and how many are full-time?
I, I don't know often. I don't know, so.
Is the director might be able to?
Well, we have a hard part, really, because we have two brand-new board members, and we're not sure yet whether they're going to be part-time or full-time. This committee may play some role in that. But that said, if you give me a second, I believe we have three board members who retired and are receiving retirement income. We have two board members who at one point or another were, did have other employment. And it might go back and forth as the year goes on. One board member who has definitely another job and is doing that as a, has a full-time income and a commitment. So now I'm short just one. So, there's, yeah, so there's a third one that has other employment, not constant, but is, and this, often, their other employment is either with Ms. Ratliff teaching in another school district, or with two others teaching college classes, which vary through the year. You know, there might be a semester where they're not teaching, and so they move into the other category.
So, help me understand this. It's possible for a board member's status as either full-time or part-time to fluctuate at any time during their tenure?
We allow them to submit monthly if there's a change.
Monthly?
So I'll get a memo that says, as of July one, I have no other employment. And then that might change in September when they have a college class that they're teaching, for instance.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. Oh, Ms. Goff, please.
And then, how does the retired status come into play? I mean, are you, have to do the lower tier because you're receiving retirement benefits?
And that's part of the inequity that the board members discuss, that if you are retired or any other type of outside income that is not related to employment, you are at the higher tier.
Oh, okay.
So if you are independently wealthy, or you have a spouse with a high salary, or you have stocks and coupons and you were the owner, you know, partial owner of the LA Times at one point, you're at the, I have no other employment. Because that's how the, this committee in 2007 wrote it, it's, do you have other employment? And we write it specifically in the memo that they sent to me about whether they have other employment or honorarium that would constitute this type of outside employment.
Okay, so the three that you referenced, that you said were retirees, they are at the higher level of compensation?
Yes.
Right, okay. I just wanted to be clear.
Okay. I didn't know that. Any other questions?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Crane.
Thanks.
And Mr. Walsh, thank you.
Madam Chair, I believe Monica Ratliff had some comments--
Oh, public comment, yes, please. Ms. Ratliff, thank you.
Thank you. I can't leave yet because I know this is going to happen. So, so what's always, I appreciate-- So, so what's always, I appreciate Ms. Spears asking about the structural deficit, right? And how long have we been in, we've been in a structural deficit?
Forever.
For years, yes, okay? For years and years and years. So if you use the structural deficit as the reason why compensation can't change, then you're just killing these board members, because there is always money set aside for raises for staff. Now, it would not be smart, especially with a Times reporter here, for me to say how much money is set aside for raises this year. But money has been set aside to give raises, at least something, right, to many of our hard-working staff. So there is money set aside that could be used to raise the compensation. And so I just wanted to be very clear about that. You're not going to raise the compensation and suddenly, like, class size has gone up because you raised the compensation for these seven board members. So there is money set aside for that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for the city attorney related to this item. There was a reference made that the last committee, when they met five years ago, they determined other employment.
That was my question.
Other employment. And so, as we look at having retired people on this board who are receiving other compensation or benefits, can this committee look into that, or is that considered other income?
Well, I believe the way the committee has drafted the resolution before it, it's distinguished between outside and earned income, and passive income people receive from whatever other sources. And that's linked to the idea of full-time service. If you don't have outside earned income, you don't have another job, you have the capacity to, to commit full-time. And so I believe that's how
Thank you.
... resolutions have been written.
Does anybody have any questions for the city attorney before he, now? Mr. Mark? Okay.
I do have one for Mr. Crane.
Oh, okay.
So city attorney, so a business, sorry. So a business owner could be a member of the board and be compensated at the higher?
That, the resolution requires you to devote your entire time, which is full-time service, and not receive outside earned income. The administration of that is a question for the district. They administer how it's implemented in terms of, as you've heard from the district already, their monthly submitting documentation as to whether there's earned income or not that month. Business ownership, I'm not sure how they handle business ownership. You may want to ask them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crane? Mr. Martinez had a question?
Mr. Crane, I have a short but serious of questions for you. Without disclosing too much on negotiations and the union, the teachers' union, is there, is there a, already scheduled timeline for which that will be discussed all over again as far as raises for teachers?
I've got my legal counsel with me, but I believe he will let me answer that, yes, negotiation discussions and the oversight that by the board is regularly on the agenda of the board members to review.
So, on that note, I think it would be, would it be fair to say that it could possibly be future, in short-term, whether it be a year, two years from now, that there might be additional raises, whether it be to the educators?
I would not go as far as Ms. Ratliff to say that there is any plan. But yes, of course, the bargaining goes on regularly, the contracts have terms, they'll come forward, and it's more often than not, the bargaining unit representatives ask for additional compensation. And the board then weighs the entire budget picture and makes a decision. And sometimes there's no response to the, can we get more money? And other times, it's negotiated.
So this time that there was, I believe, I'm so sorry, ma'am, one of my fellow colleagues had mentioned that the educators received a 10% or so raise.
10%? And I think they said it was, I thought it was 2013, but there seemed to be, maybe it was around 14 or 15 that they received it.
I think it was a three-year
Phased in.
Phased in, but it was also retroactive.
Right.
So in one year, they received back a year, and then it was added into the current year, and then there was a future year.
And just for clarification, there was a structural deficit back then as well, correct?
Yes. I think, you know, Superintendent Cortina, who was superintendent at the time, recognized that our employees had no significant increase in compensation since 2007. School districts were particularly hard-hit by the recession because, you know, the lion's share of our money is tied to the state's revenues. And so I think his determination, the board's determination, was that in order to allow for stability and peace in the system, and the fact that our employees hadn't received any compensation increases for several years, and in many of those years, there were deferrals, meaning there were unpaid days we had, they had to take, that it was appropriate for the workforce to get a compensation increase.
And in no way, shape, or form am I stating that they didn't deserve it, because for God's sake, they deal with the future
Right.
... of our country and our state of California. But do you, would you say it's a fair statement that in the next three or so years, there might be a raise? Well-deserved, in my opinion, but for educators?
It is, it is, again, subject to negotiation. The units, and I think we have, I think 10 bargaining, nine bargaining units, they're aware of our financial situation. Management is trying to also introduce into the conversation a total compensation approach, meaning we have to also look at the cost of health benefits for our employees, which is very significant for us. I think all of the, so my answer is, I don't know. But these are the, these are the variables that the board and the superintendent will have to be dealing with over the next few years.
They're not going to give away their positions early.
Mr. Walsh can correct me, but on the issue of structural deficit, part of the issue is if the school district were not actually allocating all the money that we could possibly to students and classrooms, it might be remiss. I mean, so it's created by the need to actually put forward all that we have into a year and to a classroom, not knowing very often what, how much money there will, there will be next year, how much revenue there will be, and truly not knowing the exact costs. And so structural deficits, in a way, are built into the system because we're required to give a budget for three years. The district balances their budget every single year. They're required to, and they manage it. And so anything, if there's a compensation increase, something else will give to get a zero deficit at the end of that year.
And I'm sorry, ma'am, Madam Chair. My last question is, so as my fellow colleague mentioned or stated, giving a raise to the school board members, whether it hit, maybe it hits a total, right now it's 320 or something thousand?
That was my rough math of 45,000 times seven.
So even if it hits, let's just say for the sake of argument, 800,000, is that going to break the bank? Is that going to create
No, that doesn't represent a significant
A big hole in our $13 billion budget?
No, that's, that is, it is an increase, but it's not as significant in the totality of the operating budget. It does not represent a significant increase.
Thank you. No more questions.
Thank you. Any other question? Oh, yes.
Just, since we have you here, sir, I just was very curious to know, because I often ask, where is the Lotto money?
I'm sticking there.
Lotto money is factored into our budget. So it is, is it part of the, of the operating general fund budget?
Do you know about how much that, the schools?
I was hoping you were going to ask.
Okay.
I don't know. I don't want to have to guess.
I believe it's less than, at its peak, it was about $120 million. I think it's significantly decreased as people are not participating in the lottery in the same way. It's well less than 1%
Yeah.
Of the school district budget. And there's a certain argument that says, when the state was sending Lotto money, lottery money, they decreased what they were sending us.
I heard that.
It was not an addition in the big picture of things.
Okay.
So there's a set budget, so the lottery money just balances out what you have.
It allowed them
You don't get extra, in other words. I heard that years ago.
It allowed them to give less.
Wow. Okay.
Thank you. And then, Ms. Menendez, any other questions now?
No, I think that's pretty much.
Well, thank you, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Crane.
Thank you.
We're ready for item number three, which was a memo or a message, email message?
Yes, item number three was a communication from the vice chair of the 2012 L.A. USD Board of Education Compensation Review Committee. And also included in your materials was the minutes from the last meeting of the 2012 committee.
Thank you. And so if you all saw Mr. Bronstein's message, at one of our last committee's meetings, there was a question as to, when the committee met, their resolution was to keep the salary the same level. There was no recommendation for an increase, and so we wanted to go back and look at the meeting minutes to see what their thought process, what they took into consideration. And city staff also reached out to the vice chair of the committee for his thoughts on this, and Mr. Bronstein did respond to the committee. And briefly, whichever body received this package, he said that the full committee felt that the board members worked clearly full-time hour jobs, and that they all felt that their salary should be higher, but given the economic climate at the time, they just didn't think it was feasible to increase their salary during a recession at the time. But that the committee felt that a raise was due. Is there anything you'd like to add to that communication, Ms.? Okay. And then, we also received a copy of the minutes from the June 2012 meeting, which was their last meeting, that also talked about their action and their resolution was, was passed unanimously, and it was to not change the two-tier system. So, thank you. Any public comments on, oh, yes, Ms.
So there's really no one here who could answer questions?
No, it was, they submitted a communication in writing to the city clerk. Item number, oh, okay. Item number, oh, any questions? Okay. Item number four.
And item number four is discussion and possible action relative to a resolution establishing the salaries and benefits of the L.A. USD Board of Education members pursuant to Los Angeles City Charter, Section 804.
Thank you. As part of this discussion, I want to share with the full committee that the ad hoc committee that was established at our last meeting comprised of Ms. Forbes, Mr. Henderson, and myself, we have met. We had an open meeting earlier today, and we heard a discussion from the superintendent's office, gave a budget overview. We also had a discussion with the city attorney in terms of, do we have the jurisdiction to make this a full-time board? And you all heard that discussion already, that we actually have to make sure that we don't change that. We don't have the authority to change that, so there has to be a part-time option. And part of the discussion during our ad hoc committee was looking at whether, you know, we feel it's appropriate to increase their salary, that it currently is at 24,000, if they have another full-time, another employment. And at this time, we'd like to open it up to discussion from the full committee to get your thoughts on this, now that we have heard from several school board members from the beginning, when we first started meeting, which included today, former school board members, Ratliff, Flores. We've heard from Ms. Caprice Young, current school board members, and did we have another school board member who also joined us?
Ms. Dr. McKenna.
Yes. And so, based on that discussion and their testimony on how many hours they work to really execute the jobs of a school board member in the largest school district in the country, we wanted to have the discussion here with the full committee.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please, Ms.
Well, Madam Chair and fellow colleagues, as far as for me, I mean, it's very obvious, at least it is for me, of how much hard work the school board members put in, day in and day out, whether it be the weekday or the weekend, how much, how much time away from their families they spend, the restrictions that there are, are on even their family members to, their significant other, to be able to hold another job and therefore compensate for maybe the difference of pay. I think we've heard time and time and again through testimonies, as Madam Chair, you mentioned, through school board members, through staff, through other individuals, that it's well underpaid for the work that they do. I agree with all of that. School board seat is double the amount of area that a single L.A. City Council member has, doesn't even include how much space, I'm sorry, how much area, geographical area, it actually also has of other surrounding cities, such as some of the cities that I, that I'm here representing, which are the Five, Honeyon Park, South Gate, Maywood, Cudahoga, Bell. So for me, it's frankly, almost a no, not almost, it's a no-brainer as far as they deserve it. As much as the rest of the educators within L.A. USD deserve their, an increase for their hard work and moving the future, which are our kids and the next generation, forward, I understand the whole structural deficit, but I think that if we, if we allow that to barricade us, we're never going to move forward. We're never going to have those individuals also move forward. And frankly, to a certain degree, I'm a true believer in you get what you pay for, right? The moment you broaden, broaden this up, you'll be able to have, just like the question that I asked Dr. McKenna, I mean, you're going to get more qualified individuals, more teachers, more educators are going to be more willing to, to run and hopefully get elected, that have the best interest of our kids in mind. I'm really definitely at raising this. I think the question for me becomes more of the halfway point as far as how much money they would get if they're only part-time. I'm really at about the 125. I'm kind of right there where Ms. Ratliff had mentioned. I'm pretty much there. I think 125,000 a year is a good starting point for an elected in that position. I don't think it's quite there, but I do believe it's a good starting point to have the discussion, the conversation, and to start them in that path of trying to balance things off.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comment? Oh, Mr. Henderson?
Yes, I would like to kind of piggyback on my colleague's comment as well. As we talk about the, first of all, in regards to the structural deficit, as it's been stated, it's a three-year submittal, but annually, the budget is in the black. been stated, it's a three-year submittal, but annually, the budget is in the black, so there's not an issue in regards to that, but they have to submit a three-year budget. But I also like to speak to the effectiveness of the actual board, board members and their ability to actually do their job as far as policymakers, as we discuss issues with schools. And sometimes as a board member, as a council person, and I represent the South Bay region, so District Seven, District One, as we talk about the ability of the schools to actually, you know, educate, get folks out, if the board member would have that opportunity, as board member Ratliff said, to kind of visit school sites a little more often, not have to worry about, you know, making ends meet so much, they can actually, because they're already putting in the time in regards to what they're doing and what the job entails, I think the compensation should be increased as well as management of their own internal staff. As a board member, you have a chief of staff that makes more than you, and although I know they're all working hard, it's just, it's a disconnect between the person that's in charge of the policy that will be in the paper if there's something wrong in their district versus the staff members. So we need to make it equitable in regards to what we set the floor as and what we set the ceiling as. So and the budget does, numbers-wise, it does support an increase of around six figures, 125, 126 is kind of where I was figuring things out. And I think that actually increases the effectiveness of board members, and it changes the dynamic of board members moving forward in regards to those that would then be interested in public service at that level. So I would be in favor of an increase if, if we can come to a decent number.
Thank you. Any other comments or?
Did the, when the ad hoc committee met, did you have discussion with regards to compensation? Was there a proposal?
No, we are, we have not discussed specific numbers other than getting testimony. We had not heard from the superintendent's office, and so we wanted to get their briefing, their documents, but we haven't discussed. We wanted to bring it back to the committee and, and discuss it with all of you.
I know about budgets and deficits and the like, and most large operations, especially governmental operations, run in a deficit. I, I understood or could understand why the last commission decided to leave it the status quo, because I do recall during that time, I think teachers were doing some furloughs or there was a big to-do about the budget during that time. But it's unfortunate that this commission only meets every five years, because when they found a way to compensate the employees during, after that, a couple of years later, there was no way to review the board members' compensation at that time. I'm at the point now where I believe that there should be an increase in the compensation for the board members. The amount of work, we've heard testimony that they do, is a full-time job. And having to make a personal sacrifice to do this job and to do a good job, I think it's not fair. I do believe that, that, and that was mainly why I was asking the question with regards to what did Dr. McKenna said around $100,000. And, and we've heard testimony around, around that amount. And I'm kind of there, as my colleague, Mr. Martinez, has indicated. How you fix the part-time is going to be the question. There may be some, some board members that don't want to do the full-time, so we're going to have to address that, address that as well. But to, to look at the amount of work that they do, the hours that the board members put in, quite frankly, I was surprised. I never thought about the salary of the board members. I knew that the board, that the board members oversaw a huge geographical area in, in all of the schools that were involved, but to, to be on this commission and learn the kind of money that they were making, I was going, oh, my God! But, but that, that aside, I, I think that it should be, my opinion, I think it should be raised.
Appreciate your comments. Any other, oh, Ms. Goff, yes.
So I can just say ditto to what everyone has said. And the 125 figure seems reasonable in that you should be making more than your chief of staff. And if the chief of staff is already at 119, then, you know, 125 is not an unreasonable or an amount that could not be justified, because I think you referenced, you know, the times and not just the papers, but, you know, just the reaction from the, the general public. But I don't think the general public knows what a board member makes, just as you said. It was not until.
Or does.
Or does, that's right. You know, it's not until we got involved in this process that our eyes were open. So obviously, how it's explained or how it's communicated to the general public will, will make a difference. But again, if you're interested in, in really attracting qualified people and compensating them fairly for the time that they put in, and Dolores, I have to say, you, you keep referring to it as part-time, full-time, it's full-time. The question is, do you have some other income? And so, you know, that's, that really is the, the question. And again, when you don't have other income, you lose good people because they cannot sustain themselves on, on that kind of salary. So I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement that something has to be done.
And I just wanted to add real quickly, though, the, the one thing that got me there was when the finance officer said that it would not be a significant hit to the budget. Even though they're in a structural deficit, the increase for the board members, it would not be that big, a deal, but not a big deal where it would damage the, the budget. And so that's, that's what really convinced me.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. Any other comments or?
I think we're all in agreement for the raise. Now we just need to discuss how much, if we can agree with how much for the full-time position, it's 120 or 125, or we want to have discussion or, and the, I know we call it the, the lower tier.
Right.
But maybe I, how I should address it, for the lower tier, if maybe we want to make it 50,000, or I don't know, somebody wants to.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
And I think our colleagues, at least for me, kind of hit the nail on the head on And if I may, just for, to continue the discussion and, and see where, where it leads us, I mean, I would move, I move to, to make the compensation for 125,000 a year, full-time, and 50,000 for those that wish to be part-time or half-time.
Outside employment.
Outside employment, I'm sorry. Not, not part-time, as Ms. Goff has reiterated. I don't know if I can get a second or for further discussion.
We have a motion on the floor?
I'd second, so we can have a discussion.
Second by Ms. Goff? Discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair, did you receive public comment?
I'm sorry, that's right.
So I think we should probably consider.
We have public comment, Ms. Flores?
Thank you. I appreciate the motion and the proposal, and I think 125 goes a long way toward really recognizing the blood, sweat, and tears, the hard work. And you're right, Mr. Martinez, it's beyond full-time. And I think Ms. Ratliff spoke to the 24/7, and I can attest to that. It dawned on me as I was listening to you really struggle with the, the amount, you know, obviously, from where we were, 125 is great. And then I thought to myself, why is this different than a city council member? And, and the level at the, for the city of Los Angeles, anyway? Why wouldn't we match where we are with city council members? Again, the districts are larger. The amount of, of engagement is no different to being 24/7. The connections that board members are not, not expected, but powerful to make with parents, the number of parents that we really never even get to, and that relationship that we need to forge, more than any other constituency base, it is a high-demand position as, as an elected, as a policymaker with that constituent. There is nothing more personal in the life of your child, and so you can imagine the importance of that engagement. So I only come back to say, you know, can we think bigger? Can we think to what this position really means for the district, for the effectiveness? Mr. Henderson, your question was on point about asking about the effectiveness. At the end of the day, that's what we want, effective, responsible, creative board members that are going to do everything possible to get us to where we want to go for, for our kids' education. So I only bring that back. I would, I think the world would be happy to hear the 125, but I would stretch us to think, why not equal to a city council member in the city of Los Angeles?
Thank you.
And so your proposal would be?
I think.
192,000?
It's close to that.
So there's a motion on the floor?
Okay.
Any other discussion, Mr.?
Yeah, we're still in discussion mode, so I definitely, I forgot my point, because the 192 kind of threw me. Once we said that. But I, but I do think, as colleague Alice Goff said, that I think, sitting on this, this committee for this time, I actually have been educated in regards to, because I understand the role of the board member, the time spent, the duties. I didn't realize that, when I shared this with other colleagues, just in other spaces, they're like, they'd do what? I wouldn't have done it to, for just the time spent and everything and all that. And because, almost becomes counterproductive, because you have to sacrifice so much of your personal time, your family time, for the, the support of our kids and our children and our future. And meeting your constituents and giving that face time, that's a lot for what you have to give up. So I think it needs to be made clear and educated to the public that this, this position, this board position has been woefully compensated for the amount of work that they do. I'm thinking my role as having a full-time job and a part-time elected official, I spend about 25 to 30 hours outside of work just doing elected stuff, whereas as a board member dealing with children, I mean, they're, folks are expecting them in the office 9:00 a.m. That's almost like a regular job. So it's not part-time. So I think it's been woefully undercompensated. I think the last committee, because of the financial climate at the time, they probably made the, the best decision that they could. But I think at this juncture, I think this is our opportunity to kind of correct some of the previous actions and then set up the board for potential, uh, future success. So we got the motion and second, and I'm going to call for the vote.
There was a question.
There was still some discussion, yes?
There was a question with regards to the city council being comparable to city council. And if I'm looking at this document correctly, as of July 2016, they were at 191.
Right.
They were at 150 in 2006. And then the, the state legislators, they're, depending on what position you have, is running between 119 and.
104.
152,000 a year.
104,000 for a state legislator.
What, that would be 107 as of like three weeks ago.
Three, okay.
Yes, it went up.
Okay.
But ma'am, to, to, I guess to, to your point, and fellow colleagues, I just see this as a good starting point. As Mr. Henderson stated, it's, the way I see it, it's time to start catching up, right, for everything that had not been done in the past. I see this as a good foundation to, for maybe future commissions, committees, to take it from there, take the baton from there and, and, and decide whether they want to increase it later on or not. But really, it's, it's up to this body. I, I'm just saying that 125 is a good foundation, a, a good starting point, foundation, because we are jumping from, what is it, 48 or 46,000 to what it is now. Not that the 46 was any better, because it wasn't, or it isn't, but it's up, it's up to this body.
Do you have different thoughts, Madam Chair?
No, I am also in concurrence that, after hearing all the testimony, listening to all the former school board members and a current school board member outline the number of hours that they spend a week, the kind of time that's required, also the quality of people that we will attract to look for these positions, after testimony from the superintendent's office in terms of the budget, and listening to testimony from the vice chair from the committee five years ago, that there was a need to increase, that compensation was not comparable to the level of time that they were investing in this position and to our children, being the largest school district in the country. And so I, I agree with that as well. I do have a question for the city attorney in terms of procedure not having a current written resolution. I would ask if you could clarify, there, you know, we have a motion on the floor, but we don't have a resolution, a formal written resolution.
Right. So what the committee needs to adopt in the end is a resolution detailing its findings and establishing the salary. What I understand is on the floor right now is a motion to set the compensation elements of that resolution. At the, the figures referenced by Commissioner Martinez. So if a vote is taken on that, the next step would be for the chair to decide how the resolution gets crafted, either in the ad hoc committee or, or in other ways, brought back to this committee and then reviewed by the committee, open for public comment, and then allowed to, at that point, you can act on it as a final matter.
Thank you for clarifying, clarification there. Any questions?
No, I, I just want to say that I, I believe that this would be fair, as you, as everybody has said, in, in order to be able to start from somewhere.
Thank you, Mr..
You know, when, when Mr. Walsh was talking about the class sizes maybe going up and the decline of the, the student body, and my son's school, we may lose some teachers. And so, I mean, we would like to increase it and, and maybe be comparable to, to the city council, but I think that for reasons of optics, for being fair, I think this is a very, a good number, and I'm very comfortable with this.
Thank you. Any other comments from the committee?
I just.
Oh, Ms. Forbes?
Just for the record, I just have to say that I agree with all the comments of my, my colleagues on, on our committee. And I think as Efron has stated, that the 125 per year for a, a member who commits full-time to that position is a fair starting point. And so I.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to take a vote on the motion that, which is currently on the table, to have the compensation for a member who work, who does not have any outside, other outside employment, be at 125,000. And then for a board member who has a outside employment, be at 50,000 a year.
Is that the correct motion?
That, that is correct. The motion was for 125,000 full-time.
Or, well, no, no, yes, no other employment, okay.
And 50,000 if they had other income or employment.
Can I just add?
A friendly amendment, or, or an amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, please.
I probably spelled out of the procedural thing. I just wanted to remind us of what the current resolution, the 2007 compensation. resolution, the 2007 Compensation Review Committee's resolution, the terminology says that for a member of the board who accepts no compensation fee or honorarium from outside employment shall be paid a full-time salary. And I just want to make sure that that's the parameters that we're working in on this one.
Do we accept that friendly amendment? All those, Ms. Goff, yes?
Because I think you asked that question of the city attorney, and I think that comes in the drafting of the resolution portion.
Right, it is. I just wanted to make-
To make sure that we are on, that we get that, okay.
Totally noted.
All right. Look, we all turned into lawyers. So we've all turned into lawyers.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. I'm sorry. Oh, any opposed? No abstentions? Motion passes. So our next steps will be the ad hoc committee will work on the resolution to bring it back to the full committee. Well, thank you very much. And we're now adjourned.